I think we need a roll call.
Chambers?
President in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Phipps?
President in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Greenman Wright?
President in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Milliken?
President in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Pitaco?
President in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Pitts? Vias?
President in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
And Whisner?
President, Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Thank you.
Excellent. We were, we were set an agenda for the meeting. Were there any changes to that agenda? Nope. Seeing none, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda for today?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion by Vias, support by Greenman Wright, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carried. Any communications or announcements?
Just that we, because of another meeting this evening, are going to have a pretty hard stop. We're gonna shoot for 5:15 at the, at the latest to give our, our IT staff the ability to switch gears for the next meeting. So let's, we just wanna make sure we're being mindful.
Good. And, and I guess, because there's no public hearing, I'll take advantage of the moment to remind people this is a public heari- or public meeting, it's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting. So if there is anybody listening, we will be taking citizen comments later on the agenda. As always, you can call 269-226-6573 and leave a comment, and we will listen to that later on under citizen's comments. So for the, for benefit of the planning commissioners, we will probably try to wrap up our discussion by 5 o'clock to leave plenty of time for any citizen's comments and any of the other sundry items that are on the agenda. There is the, the remainder of the agenda to make sure we hit that 5:15 mark. So. With that, I'll turn it over to staff as we enter new business.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen. Ken, did it go? Hold on. There. So I just have a few slides, just so we have a visual. Again, you know, the point of our special meeting today is to discuss how this body will be, how this body would prefer to review large cases, including a discussion on, or, you know, touching a base on notice engagement and how we do updates in a form, not only this body, but the city commission as well, so we're all on the same page when we're doing projects and working toward their, their approval or their achievement. So when I, and also if it's okay with you, if you have a burning question, like, please feel free to interrupt me. I can't see everybody though, so you'll have to speak to, to stop me from talking. If not, we can go into discussion at the end. Totally up to you. Okay, so large cases, you know, what I mean by large cases are things like an update to our master plan or revision to our master plan that requires multiple public notices and deadlines and public review. I mean, larger neighborhood focused zoning updates, like the one we saw last week in the east side or that we did a couple of years ago on the north side. And I also mean projects that are scattered sites. So our neighborhood zoning updates, like east side last week, east side neighborhood was a bunch of parcels that were pretty much in the same area. They're all contiguous, you know, even across the street from each other. We will, you have in the past seen, uh, large zoning initiatives that have scattered third sites throughout the city, such as NFP Phase 1, NFP Phase 2, and later this year, a likely update of all of our commercial districts in the city. And I wanna differentiate between, you know, how we handle notice and discussions, not notice, but how we do engagement with, you know, when sites are clumped together and close next to each other versus, you know, hundreds or thousands of parcels when scattered throughout the whole city in different neighborhoods. Because you're gonna see both of these types of projects in the next year, and I wanna make sure that when we're bringing them forward, that we're doing it in a way that not only is meeting the city's goals for our public participation plan but also to meet, make sure that you feel satisfied in how we've been communicating it with the community. So, we don't need to dwell too much on this. I mean, you know that all of our public hearings that come before you at a minimum have this. Now, we do far more engagement than this. This is just what the state requires. And of course, there's a notice in the Gazette that's posted a couple of weeks before the hearing, and we mail letters to property owners. So generally, when a case comes before this board, the zoning board of appeals, letters are mailed out to all the impacted property owners and occupants of those places, as well as those within 300 feet. Now, the state of Michigan does allow, if you have an area that is 11 or more parcels, you don't have to do this, the notice in the same way, because at some point, if you're doing a huge area, that's become quite burdensome on a municipality to send individual notices. So it's not required by the state. We, however, regardless of the size, have up to this point always sent letters to the impacted property owners and occupants at a minimum, in addition to whatever other engagement we've done. And, you know, again, the state requires those things to be done 15 days in advance. We talked a lot last fall that perhaps, for some cases, that is not soon enough, right? And so one of the things that staff is proposing to you today is that we will work to send those letters out a bit earlier in advance to make sure that folks have more time to call and ask questions, to get the information. Now, we often send them out early, but we'll, this will be something that we will do regularly. There is a balance on how early we send notice. You know, you don't want it too early, because then it'll be forgotten about, right? It's, it, it doesn't serve its purpose. And, you know, there might be a sweet spot in there around three weeks in advance or so that allows us to get that notice out, because we're also assuming for these cases that we've already done engagement, right? We've already had conversations with as many people as possible, and this is that formal notice for maybe folks that have not tuned in. So, you know, we, when we have big cases moving forward, we'll make sure that we get our letters out earlier, and whenever possible, if there's gonna be a meeting, office hours where people could get information, or just, you know, a place to go, number to call for more information on a case, that will always be included in the notice in addition to the information about the public hearing. So that's one thing that we'll start to do with all of our big cases moving forward. Now, again, that's the required notice. Of course, we always do engagement, and we follow our public participation plan, which is available on magickalamazoo.com, and it, which is also currently in the process of being updated by staff to make sure that we, to make sure that it is following our equity and inclusivity policy, making sure that it's as transparent as possible. So an update to that document later this year will be coming to you. But, you know, we, it sets out how we review cases. You know, if you're doing a, if it's a big area, but it's something that has a small impact, you engage differently than if it's a small area that's gonna have a big impact, right? And there's a series of matrices that you can follow along that helps staff understand what we need to do. Now, again, I kind of talked at the beginning that there are different types of projects that come before this board that kind of yield different ways for us to engage. And so we talk about neighborhood focused projects, and then we talk about scattered site projects, and even, I'll even put whole city projects in there, where the opportunity for door knocking is gonna be a little more difficult, given the sheer number of the parcels and the fact that they are, you know, scattered throughout, throughout the city. So when we bring a neighborhood focused project to you, you know, we will absolutely be relying on our partners as we prepare and do engagement. You know, this includes our neighborhood association, our leaders, businesses, churches, and other organizations that exist within the community. With the east side project that we had last week, we were so fortunate to have the Kalamazoo East Side Neighborhood Association, the Kalamazoo Land Bank, which were both, are both very active in doing projects in the neighborhood that allowed us to have more conversations and more focused conversations than we often have the ability to do. Whenever you have a project coming to you, neighborhood focused, it's going to be following the neighborhood plan and the master plan, because again, that's always our goal, is to make sure that everything aligns with the neighborhood plan and the master plan. And the type of engagement that we'll do, again, will be based on, you know, the information of the public participation plan and based on the size of the area. You know, our ability, COVID or not COVID, you know, certainly has impacted how we have the different tools that we have used. But we have found, at least during COVID time, that door hangers have become particularly critical, because we aren't able to bring people to meetings. We've done door hangers where you can mail back postcards, we've used postcards, and we've used flyers to alert people to upcoming events. And again, this are, these are some of the things that would happen prior to that formal notice that goes out. And, you know, we will really, our staff will really work to make sure that we're allowing more opportunities for comments and concerns to come out, and more, and, you know, a more defined space between notices. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes, too. So scattered site projects, you know, we'll continue to rely on our partners like we did for small, but relying on a lot of partners, right? Because we might be touching all the neighborhoods or half the neighborhoods. You know, anything that's a scattered site project will absolutely be in alignment with the master plan and the city's strategic vision. But the activities that we do leading up to those projects might vary a little bit. And we, in how, we internally have really been talking about, you know, what, you know, what is the, what is, what is the cost and what is the efficacy of different methods? You know, can we mail letters to people twice? Does that make sense? Will people note? Will people pay attention to those? You know, how do we divide up based on, you know, if a building that's in an impacted area is owner occupied or a tenant, makes a difference on what method might be more effective? You know, if we're thinking in advance of 2021, where we're looking at commercial areas, a lot of commercial businesses are in buildings owned by somebody else. You know, we think about some of our commercial corridors. And so dropping off a flyer or a door hanger notifies the business or the employees of the business, but may not get to the owner of the property because of the ownership structure of some areas. So we will, moving forward, you know, really make sure that in our public participation plan that we lay out prior to kicking off a project, that we're thinking about all of these elements to make sure that we're crafting something that is reaching everybody in a really timely manner. So, how, how do we, you know, those are the things that staff does, and will always do. And, you know, I wanna make sure that we are keeping this body, as well as the city commission, informed of any progress that we have. And so we have an item on our agenda, it's the city planners report, and often I give you a couple of updates and I ramble on a bit. I think what we'll do moving forward is use that period of time to make sure that you are fully in the loop of the big projects that are moving forward, and take that space, because that's what it's for, to give you small presentations, not just a quick blurb, hey, we're doing this, but maybe a short PowerPoint, maybe something that shows you where we are in the project and what we've heard. And I think that for most projects, there's three places where I'll be coming to you, or Pete will be coming to you regularly with information. So of course, the start of the project. You know, we're gonna, I often tell you a project is being kicked off, but, you know, we'll give you a little more detail. Here's what we're doing for our public participation plan, here's how we hope to engage, here's what we're gonna, you know, here's the basic timeline, and those type of details. And then some way, someplace in the midpoint of the project, someplace between where we start to shift between engagement and input and, you know, design or draft, we will come back to you again and say, we heard this. You know, here's who was at the table, here's what we learned, here's where we're going. And then at some point before the public hearing, come back to you one more time to say, you know, here's, we're wrapping it up, it's going to be coming to you. You know, this is your opportunity to ask any questions, and sort of be thinking about things for the presentation and the public hearing. And we'll do the same thing for city commission. We regularly send internal updates on projects to the city manager's office, and so those things get passed on to all staff and the commission, so everyone is aware of projects and activities. And that way, we're trying, we're all kind of rowing the boat in the same direction, right? And we all know what's coming, we all know what was done to get it to, you know, whether it's this board or to the city commission, with the hope of a, you know, a, a positive review, just a discussion and approval process. So when this body's actually reviewing it, you know, again, we're gonna increase the number of times that we talk about a project in advance of you seeing it to make sure that you have, or you're giving you the opportunity to understand all the facets of it and ask questions. You know, when we give a hearing presentation, one of the things I'd love to know is, you know, what could we do differently in our presentations? What information could we be providing you? You know, we, if there is something, when you receive your packets, you know, that you have questions on, or would like our presentation to focus on, you can let Steph know that to make sure that we are tweaking our presentation and offering that, making sure that we're hitting highlights for you and the community based on questions that you have. And that, one of the things that I want to touch on, we've talked about a bit this fall, is that, you know, even with the increased presentations beforehand, a case can always be continued. It could be continued without closing the public hearing to another meeting. It can be continued even after you've closed the public hearing, and at the next meeting, you have the option to just deliberate and vote, or reopen the public hearing. Those are all options. And you, staff just, you know, when, when you do that, staff would just ask that you, you give clear direction to us so we know what additional information or activities need to happen during that continuation, right? And are we continuing it to the next public meet, the next regularly scheduled meeting? Are we doing a special meeting? Those type of details, because we wanna make sure that we're, for the public that are following along at our meetings can hear, you know, what, what was the missing information, what needed a little more detail, and then ideally when you, a, a set time for when the case will be heard and continued. So those are the things that I wanted to touch on, which are really bright and light, and they did not need a PowerPoint, but I just thought it'd be better for you to have that to look at rather than me talking. But those are the things that I, you know, wanted to say. I think that we, as staff, really try to do our best to, for engagement, we try to get consensus as much as possible when we do projects, but we know that when we are doing zoning, it is unlikely, and last week was kind of an anomaly, of, that we're gonna have 100% consensus, especially for a zoning case. It just, that's not, that's not typically the path that we follow. You know, not having 100% consensus does not mean that the engagement was faulty, doesn't mean the engagement was perfect. You know, it's just not complete consensus. But it is something that we will always work towards and always want to answer everybody's question to make sure that everyone can have a very informed decision. You know, last week, you know, because of all the activities that are going on in the east side, because of the very active neighborhood association and partners, and truthfully, quite obsolete zoning, you know, there is a kind of convergence of all those things that made that project smoother than others, or, you know, why, more widely supported because of all of the things that it, it did. I, I hope all of our projects are like that, but we know, you know, that that's not always gonna be the case. But know that even when there's not consensus, staff has done their, their best to answer questions in a timely way, to make sure that if someone does have concerns, we've at least, you know, provided them an answer to the, our best ability. Yeah. So at this point, what I would like to do is, Chair Milliken, I, I, I'm not, I'd love to hear what everybody is thinking. Do these steps make sense? Are there other things that we should be considering? Because we, we do really, really want to get through commercial zoning in the city this year. That means focusing on our corridors and nodes that we started pre-COVID last year that kind of got stalled. We got moved east side forward, but we had work in Edison going, north side and Vine, that we had started before COVID. You know, that work, we'd like to move forward. And, you know, we know that a lot of our commercial districts, CC, CN1, CN2, CO, CNO, you know, we have all these districts, many of which are, are, some of them are not mapped, some of them are only mapped in a couple of places, that all of that needs review and updating, and that's something that we would like to be able to get through. So with that, I, we would love to hear your thoughts and your ideas.
Great. Well, thank you for all that. What, let me open it up. What, what questions, what additional comments, what thoughts do people have?
I can start. This is really cool. Thank you for breaking down the plan, Christina, for giving us a heads up. I think I agree that having some more touchpoints ahead of upcoming, upcoming reviews will really help us to look into possible questions. I think it'll help generate some more questions from, you know, especially for big zoning, things that come up, it'll start generating questions sooner from people who live in the region. So I was kind of reviewing what brought us to this meeting, and it was the, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was the second phase of the natural features protection review that kind of led us to having this special meeting to talk about how we review. So, on reflection, I think what jumped out at me was that, you know, the first phase that we did was really, it was our, we talked about it like it was our entryway into natural features protection, it was our entryway into this new zoning designation, and it was going to be expanded upon based on the feedback that we got from that meeting. And then the second time, you know, when we got this sort of second phase or the expansion of the natural features protection that was presented to us just as a geographic expansion, like, you know, we found some more places to designate. Although just on that, it seemed a little bit less consistent than the first phase, where it was just kind of the highlights of like, okay, these are the big natural features we've identified, these are the ones we're protecting. And then the second time around, it was a little, we, I think a couple of people pointed out that there were some inconsistencies. But beyond that, what really struck me was that we didn't address any of the questions that came up the first time around. The questions like, okay, so this new zoning designation is gonna require a city-approved arborist to look at a tree in my yard. I didn't know I had to do that. Who's gonna pay for this arborist? Because I was just gonna ask, you know, my neighbor, the Joe up the street who knows things about trees. So when we came across questions like that, I was hoping we would address them the second time around. And so that was something that I think we're gonna maybe get ahead of by looking at, by getting an extra touchpoint on some of the reviews that are coming up. But I just wanted to bring that up, because I think that was the biggest thing that jumped out at me, was that we're unable to answer questions that come to us when we are reviewing. So, so what's the best way to make a satisfying review of a case, especially a big one, like a zoning case, or like the natural features protection? What's a, what's a satisfying way to come to consensus, or at least a satisfying decision when we're unable to answer questions that are still lingering? And how do we make sure that this body can do that without having to extend every single hearing to the next one, to the next one, to the next? Anybody want to?
I mean, well, go, I have to.
Well, I mean, so there's really, if we can't discuss, I mean, the first way is for us to discuss at a meeting, and admittedly, we don't do a great job of that as a body. And sometimes it's hard, and, and I don't do a great job, because I sometimes need some time to absorb new information and questions, and sometimes I don't have like, questions like you bring up there, we don't have the answers. And so if we're not able to answer questions, and we feel like we can't make a decision without those answers, then that's justification to continue or table a decision until a following meeting, whether it's a special meeting or whether, whether, or it's the, the next month, a regular meeting, for certain. And sometimes you just get bombarded with a lot of new information, and, or you get hit with some comments that you weren't expecting, and we just need to sort of absorb it for a little bit, and that's reason to, to table something and kind of postpone a decision. Maybe there's really not a whole lot that anyone needs to do, or you need to, to sort of like simmer on it for a couple of weeks. I think this plan that you've laid out, Christina, is gonna help a lot with that, at least for me personally. I felt, that was my biggest concern after the downtown zoning and the NFP, was I didn't feel comfortable going to the public participation events. I watched some of them online, I watched all of them online. But I didn't feel comfortable going, even though both you and Clyde said we could. I didn't feel comfortable going, and certainly not engaging in the participation. But I still attended, I still learned, but I still learned things at both of those public hearings that I didn't know before. And so, you know, here I am learning on the night I'm supposed to be making a decision, and that was hard. So having those additional opportunities to learn and ask questions at the public forum, where we're allowed to ask those questions, we're allowed to learn, it's on the record, I think is gonna be really an important step, especially on these ones like commercial zoning, where I imagine there will be some controversy, and there'll be some, some questions, and it will be complicated. And that's okay, that doesn't mean it's bad. It just means we need to be on our game, and we need to know what we're doing when we make our decisions. I don't know if that helped you, Staki, but.
Yeah, and I wanna say, there's nothing wrong with tabling a, a decision and moving it to the next one, but I want to avoid us getting in the habit of doing that, because we're waiting on new information. Because essentially, what we're doing then is taking two meetings per hearing, and that's not a good use of anybody's time. Go ahead. You have something to add?
All I was gonna say was, you know, we, as staff, we will do our best to be ready to answer questions, right? And if it is something that we can't satisfactorily answer, and is intricately tied to your ability to recommend the case forward or to approve it, it's, if it's an approval item, then, you know, continuing it is, is, is your best bet. There are things, you know, in a very technical sense of the word, there are other options for you. You know, in terms of putting conditions on things, or recommending removal of a parcel, or, you know, an area that's getting into, that's, that gets complicated and into the weeds. But, you know, those are technically other options that you have. You know, when staff brings something to you, you know, we try our best, you know, to be as complete as possible. You know, if we, you know, and when we bring it forward, we might defend, we'll probably defend what we're bringing forward, and that's kind of what we're doing, right? We wrote something, we, you know, used best practices, we used our professional experience, we used community input, we used the master plan to bring something to you. And so we, you know, when we present it, we're, we're defending it, right? I mean, that's what, kind of what it is. But, you know, that's not, that's not, that's not intended to be pushback when there are questions. It's just that, when we came to you, that we had, we were using all the information that we had and made, you know, put the best foot forward and made the presentation. I don't know if that made sense, but.
What other thoughts that people have or questions? Yes?
May, may I add something?
Yeah.
Well, I, I would say that continuing or tabling an issue to a subsequent meeting is a fine idea, as long as, as you guys are as specific as you can be about what you need to have clarified, or what additional information you need to have. Because if it looks like you just can't decide, and you need another month to decide it, that, the optics of that looks terrible. Because if it looks like you just can't decide and you need another month to decide it, that, the optics of that looks terrible. It looks like basically you're, you're in over your head as, 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 as a body. So, uh, it, but you're always welcome to ask for more clarification or for more information. So you can make a better decision. People understand that and they want you to, 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 to do that. So the decision is, is more valid. But, uh, a couple of times it, it looked like you were just overwhelmed with a lot of stuff that you didn't understand. And you just wanted to simmer, then it simmered for a while. Well, there's a downside to that, uh, if you're not specific about what more information you need. So that's my input.
Who else has comments or thoughts?
Oh, I have another one. At some point we start to worry, have we contacted all the stakeholders that we think ought to be paying attention? And, uh, it might be good for the planning commission to, to review, well, who, who haven't we heard from that we, we expect to hear from? Or how can, what, what areas are we like, could we be, potentially be blindsided on? And can we do kind of focused outreach or get the, uh, the staff to do that? Cause you know, it's frustrating that so many people seem to have missed multiple opportunities to, to become engaged in spite of all the efforts that, that this staff makes. So I'm just wondering at some point midway in the thing, if, if we haven't heard from, uh, some key stakeholders, is it appropriate for the planning commission to ask for, uh, more targeted outreach?
And if we, if staff is going to, if we do work in kind of that mid-project presentation midpoint where we're, as we're starting to wrap, you know, we're wrapping up engagement, we're moving towards writing or draft or map, you know, that we can be far more detailed in who and how, uh, we engage to help answer that question or, or make.
Yeah. That'll be really good because we could, we could begin to ask questions, oh, have you heard from this group or have you talked to that group or? And your answer could be, oh, no, we haven't. That's really good. Or, yeah, well, we've tried to reach out to them three times and we haven't heard from them. And maybe someone in the group has an idea of, well, maybe try this person. Or, um, all right, well, let me give a caller. Well, I'm just not comfortable moving forward until you've gotten in cut, in touch with that person or that group or whatever. You know, I think that having that information ahead of time will be really helpful. So we're not stuck in that position the night of the public hearing. That's great.
Are there things in, when we do come to the public hearing, are there, how have you found? Are the presentations that you're getting, do they have enough detail? Are they covering what you would want to be covered? Do you want more information on the process at that point? Do you want more engagement on what's being proposed? Everything? Is there anything that we need to be tweaking in terms of that?
Yes, it is helpful. I think something that might be helpful ahead of time, so I'm thinking again about the, the report that we'll get, the meeting, right? So a meeting prior, something that might be helpful is like a, I don't know, something to watch out for or possible issues. I, and I don't know how to phrase that exactly, but just, you know, what should we look out for? What are some possible problems that people will have with this particular case?
I think that's going to be especially helpful for the newer members on your commission. Uh, cause sometimes experienced people can kind of sense where it may come from, but the, the newer members, it'd be nice to have them be kind of get a heads up on these things.
What other things people, uh, what other feedback do you all have for the public hearing presentation?
I really think that you and Greg and Saki have really hit on, um, a lot of, kind of a lot of the high points. One other thing that I think really cripples us is I feel like we often get stuck in engaging in public hearings with one-way conversations with citizens. We obviously, we can't answer questions or ask more questions during the citizen, um, comment period. So I, I think that's kind of another fail point for us as a, as when we address things just in the public hearing. That's my question making sense. So I do, I do think that having the multiple touch points as you presented, Christina, would really offer opportunities for that, um, so that we're not just getting information in terms of feedback in the public hearing when we can't say any, like, we can't do anything about it other than, um, make major changes. I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner Urban.
Well, I was just going to say that the commission itself has the same problem with, uh, public comment. We, we can't comment either right in the moment about that. But I found that what's very helpful is to acknowledge when it comes to commissioner comments at the end of the meeting, to say something in the term, in way of feedback that lets the person know that you heard what they said and that, that somehow you took it into consideration. You don't have to say you agreed or disagreed, but you could say that I, 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 I just summarized what they said or what you thought they said. Uh, and say it was part of my consideration. Or I need more detail, see me after the meeting. That's, that's acceptable, but trying to get into one-on-ones during the middle of a meeting with a constituent or a stakeholder, uh, is so disruptive to everybody else and so annoying, uh, because it can so easily be, you know, side, it, whole thing can get sidetracked. You can see how easy that can happen. But this business of being able to give a good response when it actually isn't the time for responding, it did not miss the opportunity to do, do, do a thorough job there.
There, there have been some, so I, staff is always happy. Now, Emily, this doesn't answer your question about, or this doesn't satisfy the two-way conversation part. But, you know, you can always direct staff to respond to the comments that come in, um, which might be able to shed some, some light on. Sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't. You know, when there is public comment, I'm usually writing down what's coming in, in case you want me to respond. You know, or if someone asks a question, you know, so I'm prepared to do that. You know, maybe we need to be more consistent with post-public hearing. You know, if there are things that you want me to respond to or Pete to respond to, we can. That does not answer the, or does not, that's not, still not a two-way dialogue, but at, at least it's the opportunity to answer questions. Kind of like we did last week with the east side, there was a specific, I mean, there's one question, um, you know, ability to respond so that person gets the information in real time and perhaps it's something that impacts your review.
Good follow-up.
Yeah, I guess, thank you, Christine, actually, I mean, that does answer it. I'm not looking for, um, to have conversation from the dais, I guess, just often what it feels like is that we've given public comment and feedback, but it's too little. It's too much too late. At that point, we don't have, there isn't the freedom to take that comment into consideration. Perhaps I'm the only one sometimes that feels that way. I don't know. I would love to hear from other commissioners. But I feel like often we get some, like really good information and really good feedback that is impossible to direct.
Yeah, actually, I agree with you, Emily. I wonder, Christina, could you talk, or maybe this is a question for Clyde. Could you talk a bit about how we can, if the situation is appropriate, make, um, exceptions or, you know, especially with zoning, if we do come across an example of some really good information where a parcel should be exempted from a particular zoning change, what does that process look like? I don't know that I've ever done that, requested it, talked through it.
To piggy, actually, to expand Saki's question a little bit further. Because I think that we, the, the major rezoning that we did along Burdick, um, adding, was it the South Town District Design Review? No. It was another one, um, whereas it was a major thing and I actually remember getting feedback from Clyde when we had a meeting about using parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules. He was like, man, well, what I would have done is you guys should have put it into chunks. You know, we should have taken it bit by bit. I'm like, yeah, why, why didn't we do that? And of course I'm sitting there and thinking kind of as a sophomore commissioners, like I didn't know that I had that freedom. So I think, I, I'm just expanding a little bit further on, on Saki's question to like, how, what do we know what our options are for making things more manageable for both commissioners and citizens?
Well, there, there are, because those are good questions. I don't know that there's a single answer. Clearly, when you're attempting to exempt something, I would be, be careful because we don't want to get into the situational spot zoning. Nor, nor do you want to act like the zoning board of appeals, that's a separate body. But it is within your purview, when you're looking at a rezoning request, does the entire request make sense for all the parcels involved? So I, I think that you could exclude, uh, parcels if you didn't, if you felt that the rezoning was not appropriate for that parcel. But again, you have to be careful because if, when you start exempting single parcels, you run into that spot zoning, uh, issue. So you, you have to be a little careful along those lines.
Right. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that we start spot zoning or take over ZBA's authority. I'm just wondering, and maybe this is something you can email to us in like a Roberts Rules primer about how to, you know, how we can read our packet and how we can start making decisions that are a little bit less all or nothing, which is what sometimes they feel like.
Yeah, I mean, this is 20.
Well, in, in that regard, there's, there's nothing wrong when you make a motion to, to break it up into parts. Uh, that is one of the things you kind of want to guard against anyway, in that there, if there's a lot of parts, a particular commissioner may say, well, I agree with parts one and three, part two, I'm not too sure about. So you can certainly break it up into parts. In fact, when it comes to making a, a motion, it's, you could, you could make, uh, the motion just for a, a separate part. It is not uncommon, at least in the zoning board of appeals, when you have several requests for variance, that board takes up each, on one parcel, there may be three different variances being requested. They will take up each individual variance as a separate issue. They'll have one presentation, but they'll vote on each variant separately. So that's certainly something this board could do when you make that initial motion to, to break out it into parts. That is a lot easier than making a general motion and then trying to amend the motion. Because now you start that, go down that parliamentary rabbit hole.
Right. Okay.
Greg, I just wanted to mention that, yeah, it, it is difficult when you look at those blanket regulations that apply to a zone district. And it, it's a, becomes a one-size-fits-all and it's, you know, yeah, you're, you're improving, you're approving the, the rezoning or the text amendment. And there are property owners that are going to have unique circumstances. They might even have a non-conforming use on that property that didn't fit with the current zone and now we're rezoning it. So I mean, that's, part of that's up to staff to try to find the background out when those questions are raised. So we can provide, you know, good informative responses to the planning commissioners. You know, the other circumstances are simply, um, you know, going to be situations where they have to apply for a variance and go to the zoning board of appeals for certain things down the road. It's just, you know, that's what the zoning board of appeals is there for. And if, if there's unique circumstances involved, then it's, you know, it can totally be warranted to go that route. But I, I know nobody wants to hear that, that they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, but, you know, that's, that's what the board is there for and that's something that the planning commissioners should keep in mind.
Good. Thank you. What other comments or questions or feedback, there's several of you we haven't heard from, which is, if you have nothing, that's fine, but I want to make sure we give opportunities for everyone to speak today if you've got something.
Um, I just want to say, uh, thanks for the, um, update. And, you know, as I've been listening to this, I think, you know, one of the most common refrains we're going to hear, no matter how much outreach you do is, well, we didn't know about this. And it's, 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 it's always going to happen. Um, but I do, um, I, I do appreciate the renewed, uh, focus on, you know, different types of earlier or more outreach, um, for the citizens. And I, I also, I wanted to really echo, I liked the idea of having a little more, you know, maybe a heads up for the, the, the commission of, you know, what, what's going to be controversial or what's going to be something that, 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 that's going to require a little more deliberation. You know, unlike the one last week, which gosh, couldn't have been, couldn't have been more unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you. Um.
One.
Any other? Yeah, sure.
One other thing I will add is, you know, unfortunately, um, you know, thinking back to our, um, NFP meeting, I really think that that had gone completely, would have gone completely differently if we were meeting in person and we were actually able to better work as a team, especially Greg and I actually sitting in proximity with each other and being better to communicate. So I think that there is a lot that we've lost, meeting as a body. I mean, everybody has, every committee, every staff, every commission, um, meeting via Zoom.
Yeah. We're doing pretty good, but you're right, there are some limitations that this causes. So thanks for noting that. Other thoughts? While we have this opportunity?
I have some thoughts. Um, first I was thinking like with the large cases, um, would that do anything for the applicant's timeline? As far as, uh, making it longer or, um, I guess a different process for them in regards to how we review things? And also, um, we talked about how like breaking it up a little bit or, um, focusing on like maybe if we had heads up, this is like some homework or look at these, uh, procedures or look at these items. So we can just be better equipped to answer questions or have questions answered as well.
So I think that the last part definitely, you know, I think, I'm not sure who brought it up before, but it was a good suggestion. You know, if we anticipate concerns regarding a specific area, if we've heard concerns, bringing them up to you, uh, at one of those touch point meetings beforehand will hopefully, um, assist in that department. In terms of timeline, I mean, the state kind of lays out what the minimum timeline is for everything, right? And a case may take longer than that. It's never going to be shorter than that. And so it's when someone is coming individually to rezone properties. And so when someone is coming individually to rezone properties and it's not necessarily city-driven, you know, they apply at least a month in advance of the meeting, you know, at least. Notice goes out, we ask them to do outreach, it comes to you. You know, it's always, there's never a guarantee that this body or anybody will review it in one meeting, right? There may be things that need to be continued. You know, that doesn't happen all that often, but it's always a possibility. And then, you know, the city commission reviews all zoning requests, the city commission reviews them. So then there's time to get to the city commission. City commission does it over two meetings and so there's time there. And so if someone is coming individually, we often say, you know, it's about three months, right? Or it could be three months, two to three months. But because, just because there's notice requirements that we have to meet in spacing. I'm not sure that that alone should impact your decision on anything if you don't have complete information or if there's, there's something going on. And, you know, I think a frank conversation with the applicant on why things need to be continued, whether it's me or Pete or, you know, someone from the city or someone, you know, a resident. But yeah.
I think, to be fair, most everything we're talking about, I don't want to say absolutely everything, but most everything we're talking about is going to be city-initiated. Now, I mean, we're talking about major rezoning, major plan amendments, major zoning ordinance amendments. So I think the only quote-unquote applicant that would be, you know, affected in this case would be city staff if there is any impact to that schedule. And I, my guess is these little touch base meetings would just fit within the normal schedule of your preparation and public participation.
Yes.
Would be my, my, my assumption. So I guess that's a good segue to mine. My last question would be, you laid out a couple that you're anticipating here in 2021. What do you see coming up the pike first? When might we see one of these touch base meetings? When might this be the first rolled out that we would look forward to this?
So we have three neighborhood-focused ones that we started evolve 2020, that we had a meeting, sometimes two meetings, but then COVID hit. So I think we would like to bring those first to you, depending on how we go back and do have conversations with the community. That includes parts of the north side, the east end of the north side, the Portage Corridor down to Washington Square and West Edge from downtown, almost across Town Parkway. And so those are the areas. I would expect that at your next meeting, I'll have a presentation for you on, you know, the first touch base, where we are, what's going on there. You know, some projects have more momentum than others. So that will kind of depend on when they come. So at least a touch base with you in February. And, you know, then cases coming in March or April. I would like to touch, I would like to have that kind of kickoff presentation with you with NFP two at February. If Jamie McCarthy, who's our staff lead, is, is ready for that. We've talked about February or March. But at least a presentation of the public participation plan and what's going to happen and when you'll see it and how we'll have the conversations. So some neighborhood zonings in NFP two would be the first touches that you would have.
Great. Any other comments or questions or thoughts at this point? If not, well, then maybe we'll, unless anyone has a need to continue this, maybe we will look forward to that in February and see what comes of it. And then if there's questions or concerns or feedback at that point, we can have that during, you know, the, the end of the meeting discussion, city planner or, you know, city planner report miscellaneous comments at the end of the meeting in February. And, and sort of have this as a, not an ongoing dialogue, but a, some feedback on the process as it, as it evolved here in 2021. So thank you, everyone, for your comments. We'll get through our agenda here. So we, there's no public hearings or other business, correct? All right, were there any citizen comments that called in?
Yes, there is one citizen comment, one moment, please.
This is Richard Stewart. I reside at eight twenty-eight Portage Street in the Southtown neighborhood. I'm calling to again express that Christina Anderson is acting in bad faith when it comes to reaching out to property owners. She simply boasts that she follows the minimum requirement by law to notify. She is well aware of email addresses we have at the Southtown neighborhood. And she mails out notices to the wrong places. She does not post anything on the doors. There's no good faith effort. We are still trying to file the Southtown neighborhood plan to be considered for the 2025 master plan. In this plan, we protect the natural features. The NFP is designated behind Stockbridge and Lake just east of John Street. Mayor David Anderson continues to use his political influence to benefit his nonprofit to build a, to pave a seventy-seven space parking lot over an existing natural feature. That's our wetland, our natural green space and wildlife habitat. Secondly, the Southtown Neighborhood Association has held meetings with the residents and owners in Southtown to keep the Portage Corridor in the Business District CC zoning. Much of it already is, we'd like it consistent to CC. There is a need in the market for CC. There is an oversupply of Live Work One and Live Work Two. You have an oversupply of Live Work One and Live Work Two, zero demand for Live Work One, Live Work Two. Extreme need and appetite for CC zoning, the highest and best use. I hope that you have a discussion with Christina Anderson and insist that she work with the Southtown neighborhood. Thank you.
And that are all the comments at this time.
Good. All right, thank you, citizen's comments. Mr. Urban, city commission liaison comment. Oh, you're on mute, sir.
I think I've made them already, thank you. I'm all, I'm all set.
Nope, you're all set, very good, thank you. City planners report.
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Miscellaneous comments by planning commissioners? Any miscellaneous comments?
I'm, I'll just jump in to say, thanks for hosting this meeting for us and organizing it and just answering all of our questions. It is really, you are very valued and we appreciate all the work you do. Sorry for asking so many questions.
It's what we're here for.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous comments? No, all right. Well, thank you all again. Yes, thank you for participating in this good discussion kicking off 2021 here with the great process. We'll look forward to seeing it roll out in February. Thank you, Christina, for your hard work on it and your staff. And we, yeah, that's it. So seeing nothing else on the agenda, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Go back.
Thank you, good night.